All right. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the power of brushwork. Session one, sky and trees and today pairs. It seems weird and a little bit uh strange way to approach it, but I promise it will make sense when we're talking about form and structure today. Um, this is our third class, yeah, third class. Um, quick question for you. I've had multiple, multiple uh inquiries about the color green. And using a split primary palette with no green on it. I was thinking that I would um slightly change up next week and talk about uh greens and how I make a huge amount of greens using a split primary palette. And also do a little color chart like I like to do with my other colors and I've never ever done a green color chart. Um, I know that uh that um Cheryl and I've had conversations about green in the past that I made kind of an offhanded comment. But I don't actually really like green, which is not true. I love green. You gotta love green if you're gonna live in the Pacific Northwest. But I actually don't paint it that often. I'm always pushing my greens towards reds, oranges, blues, whatever else. So um I wanted to explain that a little bit, so I'm hoping you guys are um willing and uh think that would be a good idea to just learn about greens next week a little bit as part of the lesson plan. Just get a thumbs up if that's something that would be interesting to you, especially since we're painting, moving into more trees. We've kind of covered clouds and we'll continue to cover clouds. But um on the sky, but uh I thought that might be an interesting and good one because I do know in a lot of our paintings that we're getting in, um sometimes the greens look either very spring like springtime green or just kind of a little bit uh artificial. So how do we lean our greens towards the actual colors that we're seeing? So I think that'll be good.
Yeah.
Great. I'm gonna go ahead and take over the screen, but everybody say hi to each other if you've got it on a group feed there and
Hello.
Get over.
Hello.
All right, so hopefully, hopefully now I am the main uh screen here. And uh for today's class, I wanted to kind of start with uh feedback and critique of our work. If you guys would like that, um but we do have a lot of painting to do, demo time, if you guys would like that. Um, I wanna show side light, back light and front light on pear trees and clouds. So that's quite a lot to cover. And then also last week you guys mentioned that you might like to see like how bright my studio is with these new lights. Wow, almost too much. Um, but anyways, that uh vineyard painting, I've moved forward with it to a point where I'm now ready to start uh injecting some detail and kind of pulling it apart a little bit or uh separating out my values and colors. So if you guys would like that um as well, I was thinking I could do that at the end of the class. So um do you guys still wanna see me kind of do that part of it as well?
Sure.
I sure want to see your brushstrokes there.
Okay, so good, then that means again, I'm gonna be cutting our kind of feedback and critique time a little bit shorter. I'm just uh where trees join the sky, just looking at the chat there. Um.
Perhaps when we talk about green, we can talk about the vineyard. Because that is the leaves and stuff on there are gonna be shades of green or aren't they?
Uh, yeah, mostly. Um, kind of, I need to get this painting sent out to the gallery here soon. Uh, let me get it finished and dry. Um, so yeah, we'll see. Well, you're right, though. Um, and we'll talk a little bit about that today as well, about basically that transition point where the sky and the trees meet and it really does, and we're gonna talk about that. Um, really does depend on the light, the lighting, the light um and kind of how separate you wanna keep things. So there's no real rule to any of this. A lot of it is just knowing different techniques and different tricks and different uh skills that you can use to convey the feeling and the time of day, the atmosphere that you wanna get. So let's go ahead and hop over to our tablet page. So this will be our online classroom here. We've got the uh videos from last week there. Everybody sees the padlet.
Yep.
I did not share any new online links. But I did share a couple extra um handouts. So uh I know that Sharon asked me a really interesting question uh last Thursday during our kind of paint together time. And it was simply, what is perspective? And I really just took that for granted, so I appreciate that Sharon um that you asked that. And uh perspective is basically putting things into creating the illusion of depth and making things fall back into space or come forward towards the viewer. So I went ahead and uh threw in a couple of handouts about that. About linear perspective, which is this one, which I did with the clouds and the Scott and the uh landscape on the first class. And also atmospheric perspective where things get lighter and cooler and bluer often, depending on where the light is. As they fall back, big thing that we're gonna talk about um going forward is the delineation or the change of edge quality as things go back. So often the edges get softer as things go back into space. So yeah, good question, Sharon, and I appreciate you asking me that. So that I could uh clarify and share that with you. So those are there if you want them. Uh, this week's handout, did everybody get this in the email yesterday?
Yep.
Great. And were you able to read through it? Did it make a little bit of sense at least before I explained it and uh demonstrate it? So this, this is today is um form and structure within clouds and trees. We're gonna demo that using a pair, something that we can all understand. We may even have one in our kitchen. I ran downstairs just before class and then unfortunately, we have no pairs. Alls we have are oranges down there and they still work. But what I, when I'm demoing something like this, um I don't want something usually highly glossy like an apple or a pear, even though they're really, really fun to paint. That reflection on them creates a real strong highlight, which we don't often see in trees or in clouds, um because they're not as reflective. They're absorbing the light. So unless you're painting a bush like um I don't know, like a rhododendron kind of has a waxy leaf, any kind of a waxy leaf plant. But even when I'm painting those, I don't really add too many highlights. I just don't think a lot of white dots in my paintings looks very good. Um, so a pear or uh something that is um like a potato, not as uh reflective uh often makes a great form for thinking about this. So um, I'm just gonna let you guys kind of read through this and reflect on this after we've uh done the demonstration. I did throw a couple of the examples into here. But what we're gonna be learning about, and again, I wish I could zoom in on these. But you can see these pairs are being hit from the left side by the light. As too is this, these trees and mountain by Anton Petlenko. As too are these moody evening clouds. Can you guys see that how they're sharing this same light in the same structure? Right? And then in this example, we've got the light coming slightly behind raking across, hitting the edge of these pears, these trees and these clouds. So that's what I'm gonna be demonstrating is side light, back light and front light. You know, just think about that, like where is the source of the light? Again, the first question I ask when I'm painting landscape, where is the source of the light? It's generally the sun. Right? Unless it's a super overcast day, then you have very diffuse light and it can just be kind of an over all enveloping light. Um, but is the sun in front of me? Is it behind me? Is it to my left? Is it to my right? That is a great starting point. But then you also wanna think, okay, is it in front of me? But up to the right. So we're gonna look at some examples of these here in just a second. Um, so does anybody have any questions on any of this that they read so far? And then we're also gonna be talking about the uh change of edge quality. So the strongest edges are often where bright light and shadows meet. So if you think of like a tree with the uh trunk being hit by light from the left side, so then from the left side, so then the tree trunk is being lit. And then maybe it's got a shaded shadowy forest behind it. That is gonna be a strong line, a strong edge. And then edge quality changes as you get into the shadows, oftentimes becoming a little uh less pronounced and a little more soft. So we're gonna get to play with that a little bit today as well. Also, um, we're not gonna deal with this one too much today, but distance, just like we talked about atmospheric perspective, closer things have more apparent sharper edges. Things that are further away have fuzzier, softer edges, even in the desert. Just might not be as strong as here in the Pacific Northwest. So if you came to me and you're like, Michael, you know, I'm excited to take your class. What I really wanna learn is how to loosen things out. Everything in my painting feels like it's kind of cut out shapes. Right? Oftentimes, we wanna look to where can we lose or soften edges? Not all edges are created equal. We have again the uh edges from darks to lights that are a little stronger, like strong dark, strong lights next to each other. But we also get to push and pull and play with these to help control the viewer a little bit. So soft edges, for those of you taking notes, soft edges allow the viewer to skim across that area of the painting. Hard edges control the viewer and move our eye along the edge. We as humans are attracted to contrast. And oftentimes contrast is where the line is. So when I say a lead in line or a line that's leading the eye, I'm not always talking about a path, trail or a creek. Oftentimes, it's literally the line created between lights and darks. So we probably don't want strong lights and darks in the corners of our paintings or too close to the edge. I mean, they can be useful sometimes. But a lot of times we wanna keep the stronger edges, the stronger lines and the stronger contrast towards either the focal point or moving the eye towards the focal point. I feel like I just covered a lot there, Donna. Did that make sense, Donna Sires?
Yes, it it did. It's it's funny how a person can paint for such a long time and it, the way you say it makes it so clear and I'm looking over at my painting and going, oh, that needs to be blurrier and so yes, it makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Oh, good, good, good. All right, thank you for that. Um, I just saw you kind of like looking back and forth and I was wondering what you were thinking, so I just wanted to make sure. Um. Great. So again, I will let you guys review this. I always feel funny reading my own writing or you know, uh looking back through this. But um let me know if you have any questions on this, especially after we do the quick demonstration and by quick, I mean probably an hour. All right, uh reference photos. I did go ahead and add a couple more. Some of these, you guys. If you're new to painting or you're not super comfortable, don't paint something like this. This is chaos. I won't even paint something like this. If I were to approach, if I were to approach this, I would definitely try and find ways to simplify it, make sense. But I mean, clouds, atmosphere is amazing, right? We've got fog, we've got mid clouds and high clouds. Um, the Columbia River Gorge is a strange and magical place. But this, like, I got out there and I was like, yeah, I'm not painting this. I just, I'm gonna take photos and take it back. Um, it's just gorgeous, but it doesn't even make sense. It's a little creepy. It looked at some eyeballs and
Well, those little clouds are really hard to paint to get, you know, so make them look real or at least semi-real.
Yeah, no, I mean, if I was to paint this, I'd almost wanna split it into like three or four paintings. It's there's so much going on. Um, I would definitely simplify like this strong dark line is too much. Uh, there's a lot of things. So anyways, I I I put it on but very much with hesitancy, thinking, uh-oh. All the painters are gonna go, I wanna paint that. And I I still at twenty years in would not paint that. Um, but you know, we got some others that are really beautiful. Some nice, a little cleaner, a little more simple, and we're gonna be talking about things like this today. So when we, and this is, this is your real homework. And not only for this week, but for the rest of your life as artists and as a painter and as a um somebody who just wants to understand nature, what they're seeing and how, just so many times I go out into nature or I'm watching a sunset and I am not painting. But I'm thinking, how might I paint this? Right? So if you were looking at this, you guys already know what my first question is, right? Kristen Horn, what is my first question?
Where, where is the light coming from?
Yeah, perfect.
And the horizon.
Horizon line. And then second one, where's the horizon? The ocean makes the horizon line generally pretty easy. But yes, okay, so if we were to say where is the horizon, I mean, where is the light source? Super important and a little misleading in this photo. All right, Nyla, I wanna ask Nyla this one really quickly. This one's a little tricky. I, I don't worry. Where is the light source? Oops, you're muted, sorry.
Okay. Looking at it, you would think that it's back behind those clouds where you've got the really bright. But if it's tricky, I think it's probably frontlit and you're getting a reflection of the sun that's behind you. But then that doesn't go with the, the darkness of the rocks and the hills.
Uh, really good observation, really good observation. All right, so if the sun is behind me, is it to my right? Behind me directly or to my left?
Left, to your left.
Perfect. You guys did great because what you're seeing is that the sun's a little, the lighter lights in the clouds are a little more on the left side, a little darker or cooler or whatever you wanna say on the right side. And then Nyla, perfect, like why the heck are these clouds dark and why the heck are these clouds dark? The truth is probably because their sun is peeking through clouds. These are in shadow being cast by other clouds. It makes it very dramatic, but yeah, it is odd. And then you're go, okay, well, why is there light here, right?
Reflecting the sky.
This is on shadow. Exactly right. This is simply a mirror facing up to the sky. It's not facing at an angle towards that. It's facing directly up.
Michael, I have a question. If you were going to paint this right, right now where your arrow is, would you paint that in? Because if you painted it, it wouldn't look right.
Yeah. So you answered it for me.
I agree.
I I would only put it in if I asked a simple question. Is it helping?
No.
Uh, it doesn't, it doesn't help anything. It doesn't bleed in, it just creates a weird division.
Is that?
What is it?
It's a creek.
Creek, that's um Well, you're Yeah, I'm saying, I guess, but yeah, it it turns right, probably here.
Yeah, there's a couple of switchbacks after the bridge.
Yeah.
But I, I see a color change in the, right here at the bottom below the line and in front of the line, it's darker. So you could put that in, you could put that gradation in, right?
You're up on a hi, a slight hill.
Yeah, it's higher.
Okay.
So what's going on? Yeah, Linda, great observation, but I would not put that gradation in because what's going is this is going downhill towards that creek. And then it back up. So there is a little bit of a, uh, kids love playing in this water. It's, it's um it can be fresh water coming from the right and then it feeds in with saltwater and uh yeah, it depends on the tides.
The elk love it too.
Oh, my gosh, I saw a beautiful video of the elk running through it the other day. Um, so yeah, great, you guys see it's super complicated, super difficult. It is not enough, I don't believe to just say, I see this, I like it, hate it. Often we want to try to at least understand it a little bit. Because now that we know this probably is in shadow and this is probably in shadow from clouds. Again, off to our left, behind us, between us and the sun. We can decide, you know what? I wish those clouds weren't there. I'll paint white on these. Or maybe I'll let, let light hit the cup, uh, you know, tops of these rocks, because it probably happened. Right? The sun, those clouds, meaning the sun is moving. So we're open to interpretation, but I actually really like the fact that it's and it got these interesting shapes anyways.
Um, I have a question. You, you started to say, um, or maybe I missed it. Um, the, the main thing that's gonna be something you want to ask yourself or whatever for the rest of your life. What was, what was that? I had my pen ready and then I lost it.
No, what did I, what did I say?
Uh, where's the, where's the light source and where's the horizon?
Yeah, those are the two main ones. Um. Yeah, yeah, it's basically where's the light source? I really want you guys to start to see that in nature and think about it. So when you're seeing beautiful sunsets and beautiful skies and bright pink clouds all of a sudden being top lit. Enjoy it, of course, enjoy it, appreciate it, but begin to ask, okay, why is that happening? Oh, the sun is behind me and it's passing through atmosphere and it's almost a sunset, so it's making this cloud, you know, as I look away from the sun do these amazing things. And oh, look, why is that cloud so pink? It's because it's making the sky a painted bluish grayish green, right? So we get these contrasts. So that way you can either begin to make things up to push things or when you get your lousy iPhone photo back on your computer and back through your lousy printer, you can say, you know what? That's not what I saw. I saw, you know, the sky was greener, the clouds were pinker, the, you know, this and that. So, um, you know, I'm at this stage where I do make up quite a few things in my paintings. But they still hopefully feel somewhat cohesive to the natural, you know, feeling. And it's because of painting a lot and observing a lot. Um, here is a great painting for, or great photo for today. Don't, don't worry about the foreground. Uh, my wife and I checked into a hotel and she's like, oh, what a nice room. And I saw this through the window and ran, because I just think this is the most magical clouds and almost fake that I've ever seen. These would make the Simpsons clouds very proud. Um, if you guys remember that, that cartoon. Um, I just think these are fantastic. Um, I love having this as a reference, even if I don't paint such clean and clear and precise clouds. I wish I'd have taken a lot more photos actually because some of the areas are kind of bleached out. But we can, okay, I'm gonna go ahead and I'm gonna ask Sharon Hadley. This one should be a little more of a layout, a little easier for you. Which, which side of the screen, my left side over here or my right side is the side?
I would say it's right, right in the cloud area. It's coming in from the right or
Perfect, yeah. Perfect, yeah, and it's, um, yeah, that's exactly right. Go ahead.
The clouds, what amazes me is these upper clouds, the dark and light upper clouds, they look like they're right over you. You know?
Yeah.
Others look like they're far away.
Yeah, why is that, do you think?
Perspective.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is a good one for learning perspective. So you guys remember those lines that we just talked about? Right? You guys see this little diagram here?
Yep.
So that's our horizon line. And as things go back towards the horizon line, they'll get smaller. We're gonna be able to see that in the land there. The same thing, and this is less obvious to people, happens in the sky. So as clouds go further back, they get smaller and closer to the horizon line. They also, when you are looking back towards the horizon line, you only see the sides of things. As things come forward, we begin to see if you can imagine a box right here, you can see the top of that box. Back here, it's just gonna look like a little square that we're looking at the side of it. That same thing happens with clouds. As we look back, we see the sides of them. As they come forward, we are beginning to see instead of the top of the box, we're seeing the bottom of the box or the bottom of the clouds. Okay, keep that in mind as we go back to that, that uh photo.
They also get closer together.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. They do, just like the buildings do, right? Right? This is a good one actually for that. I'm gonna save this picture just for that because you guys can see those gradient lines that were so obvious in that going back into space. But now imagine that same, those same lines. Ah, this is so good for that. Thank you. Great observation. I'm gonna use this one for class forever and ever. But you can really see it. So what's happening here is we're seeing completely just the sides. And then as they come a little bit closer and a little bit closer, we're beginning to see the underbelly of them. And now we are completely just looking kind of up and under the bottom of the paint of the cloud. Right? Just like this building, we're seeing the top of this building. Whereas buildings back here, we're only seeing the sides.
Michael?
Yeah.
Where's the vanishing point?
I mean, if you were doing single point here, it'd be right here.
Yeah.
But clouds are naughty. They don't really abide by a vanishing point, but if, even if you put it there, it would still work, wouldn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, this, this photo is too good of a lesson.
Yeah.
Great photo, Michael.
Yeah, well, yeah, but I probably never paint like this. This is kind of weird and mundane and a little yucky to me. I had now this part makes me sad, but um, but this is all beautiful, but it is a good example of I'm sorry?
FedEx. It's the
Looks like.
It's a distribution center.
Oh, you're right, yeah, and some grain silos here.
Hmm.
Yeah.
I was noticing, I was noticing the um the dark underside of the clouds as they move away are flat. And then your perspective um overhead on the cloud overhead. You know, it's obviously not flat, but it's, it essentially is if we were standing far away from it. So it's kind of really helpful to see that, like you said, the underbelly when it's up close. Whereas it's further away, it gets flat on the bottom.
Yes.
Yeah. They're puffier as they come closer.
Yeah, 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 they're more broken up. And again, because now we're seeing not only the bottom of this one, we're seeing the other side of it probably. You know what I mean? Literally, we're seeing the backside of this cloud. Um, so yeah, really cool. Um, as much as I wanna paint these and I'm sure I will paint these, in fact, I'm gonna paint these into my next reference painting or uh my next um commission painting. But unfortunately for us, this weird atmospheric thing that makes clouds really flat on the bottom doesn't happen that often, as you guys know. Oftentimes they're kind of bubbly like popcorn all the way through and I'm just on top. All right, so anyways, as you're going forward in life, don't only appreciate the cool effects of the color, but try to figure out why. And I I promise you, there's sometimes I'm so baffled. I'm so baffled by it. But in trying to figure it out, it does help us in our paintings going forward. The big thing for this week for you guys, for your homework, for uh if you wanna do the demo that I'm gonna do. Is we are going to be talking about form and structure. So I just um. Because I didn't have any pairs and was too lazy to leave the house or put on, you know, clean pants. Um, I never went and bought pairs, so I just grabbed a whole bunch of references offline. Um, so. This makes it so obvious, right? The light sources from the left, it's coming across the shadow. You can look to the darker side of the pair, or you can look to where the cast shadow is, and it gives you that obvious information, right? So when I'm doing still lifes, which I don't teach hardly ever anymore. It's very easy for students to say, yes, the lights from the left, it's from the right, it's from the face, it's from the back, wherever it is. But what I'm hoping after today, so uh think of this pair, think of that light. And now look at this painting by uh, I think his name is Jesse Powell. Um, the lights coming in from the left, but slightly behind us, over probably over here. Breaking across our left shoulder, hitting here, you can see it in the clouds, you can see it in the hills, right? So even if Jesse made this painting up. He kept his light source consistent, right? Think of the pair, right? The light coming across. It's not as dark a shadow. There's no table underneath it for to have the darkest dark shadow where it's meeting the table, but it's just the same. Right? The lights coming from the left, casting a shadow on the right. And I grabbed an ungodly amount of references for this. In reverse, the light's coming from the right. These pairs are a little shinier. They do have some highlights. Beautiful and super fun to paint still lifes, the highlights. We don't get those as much in nature. Light coming from the right. Illuminating the right side of the clouds. What I loved about this reference is this lost edge.
Wow.
Right? So that's a big difference when we're painting pairs. Oftentimes I'm gonna have a much. They're a strong edge quality, right? Where clouds are diaphanous and soft edged in a lot of places. So I'm constantly, when I'm painting my clouds, I'm looking for where are those strong edges between the lightest light and some of the darker darts? Between some of the darker darts and the lighter lights? And where are the really soft edges? Like we almost can't tell. Where the bottom of this cloud dissipates and becomes just lost, right? Over here, kind of appears disappears. So look for that, look for lost edges, soft edges. Look for lost and found edges. In your, well, in everything, but especially in your clouds. That's gonna be one of the main things. That's gonna help our clouds to feel soft and a lot. It's a great example with a tree and clouds in it. I can't remember this painter's name right now, but I really like his work. Um, but it's just all about structure, right? This dark, dark tree, but you can tell that the rough lights coming across. Hitting the right side, same thing in the clouds. But look how dark the shadows are within the tree and even on the ground. And how dark the shadows are in the cloud compared to the light. But not nearly as dark as here.
A lot of times the darkness in the clouds will be caused from the lightness. In other words. Uh, it would be like the shading of the cloud in the back where the sun's not getting it. Am I saying?
Perfect, yeah. No, that's exactly, exactly right. And that's what I'm hoping you guys are seeing. So I described a couple of references. Again, you can see how these are all related, right? The light hitting the right. Light hitting the right, light hitting the right, light hitting the right. Now we go to the left. 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 Right, Don here, Don Bishop. Paints with softer edges. He lets the foliage kind of dissipate and break off. Maybe. There's more leaves kind of sticking out a little further, but he's not painting leaves. He's creating the idea of kind of a softer edge. Whereas Anton kept his edge quality pretty, pretty tight, right? Now the lights the same. So you guys get to decide that, you know, do I want my trees to be a little tighter compacted, you know? Where the leaves are really in there, or does it have little break off areas where the, you know? So that's up to you, that you know, a matter of conveying the trees. But again, look at this light to the left, up stood up here, no, to the left, from the left, from the left, from the left, from the left. You see how they all relate?
So, Michael, when you are out plein air painting. How do you deal with the changing light?
Poorly.
Well, you take a picture.
Yeah, yeah, I definitely will take pictures to kind of different elements I wanna lock in. But yeah, you have to, that's why I start with my shadows. That's giving me my structure. And I am open to a little bit of change. But if Donna, if I'm painting for more than uh two hours. That light and those shadows are completely different, even more than an hour. Especially if you're painting sunrise or sunset, then it's a race. I always like to joke that. Plant and air at sunrise and sunset is the extreme sport of painting.
Well, I always find I start out. And put in my shadows and everything, but then as the date goes on, I think. Ooh, it looks better now and.
I'm with you. Halfway through, it's like, ooh, I like this better than what I started with.
And I, and so I chase shadows and um. So I just was curious how you dealt with it.
Yeah, I had such a fun experience uh when I was teaching out at the Columbia River Gorge out at the um. Uh, Manuka. I had, um, you know, I told this student, something, you have one hour, paint one hour and then start another one, and then an hour, paint another one. So my quick advice to you, Donna, is start another painting.
Hmm.
Um, but I had a student who painted all day long and kind of did the. Painting from the bottom left to the top right. And it was funny, it was almost like a wagon wheel of shadows. Moving across as the sun kind of went like this across the sky. And it was so fun that he's like, oh, your morning light and here's your evening light up here. Uh, it looked ridiculous and it was funny, but you know, it was kind of cool that they did it. Um, but the truth is, once you lock in those shadows, it's really hard because to change one shadow means to change all shadows. Right? You can't have them facing different directions. Just doesn't look natural and unless you're painting, yeah, like that person did. Um, so yeah, I truly will just rip that canvas off, even though I'm not done. I don't care about finishing paintings in plein air that often. I have no problem finishing them up. I wanna get the colors and I wanna get, you know, I wanna get the colors that most attract me because my camera's not gonna capture them. As well as I can, whereas at least with my interpretation of them. And I wanna capture the design, which is oftentimes the darts, right? I talk about that a lot in this class or in all my classes. It's for me, the darts and the shadows create the structure. For the painting or the foundation. If that changes and I like something new, just take that one off and pick up a new canvas. Or take a photo and paint it there. All right, from the left, from the left, from the top right. Can see the shadows are much longer here. Right? So the lights lower and to the left, the shadows are short.
Shadows coming from above.
Low, high, the lights higher. If the light is directly underneath our object, the light is above. That's why I think that painting oftentimes midday. Is the most boring because you have these little teeny shadows that directly under your objects and uh very flat light. All right, from behind to the right or from behind these to the right, you can see the angle of it. Like, and I I like this one too, because it literally looks like pairs. So I'm hoping that by doing this lesson, you guys do not think, Michael says clouds and trees look like pairs. That is not the lesson. You're not go telling other teachers, Michael O'Quinn says all clouds and trees are pairs. No. It's how they interact with the light source that is the same. And I could have picked any, any objects. But I like pairs because they're sexy. They got those nice, you know, Rubenesque curves and uh. They're not too uh reflective. So anyways, yeah, see how the light on these clouds? What uh, who else haven't asked? Linda Camarata. What is the light source of this cloud? Where is it? Is it behind it? Top right, man. How fast was that, Linda? Nice job. I think a couple of classes ago, you had a struggle. That was great.
Thanks.
Same thing here, right? Top right, um. You know, this one looks a little more to the left if I look at the shadow. But I, I think maybe this painting, I think the shadow could actually be a little more of an angle behind it because I feel like this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kind of front side.
Yeah, I'll have to talk to whoever D is, man. Left.
Oh, that's a beautiful oak tree.
And that little tree looks like Texas.
Yeah.
Left. Left. This one's a little trickier, but if I only look at this pair, I have to look at this pair.
Mm-hmm.
This one I like because a lot of times bushes are like this or rocks or whatever else where one's casting a shadow on the other one. But what helps us here is these nice, beautiful, clean shadows, right? So we know it's a directly left. This might be a good one if anybody wants to paint a uh little pair demo. From the right.
Beautiful, yeah.
From the right.
Top right.
All right, here we go. Man, who do I wanna torture?
Yeah.
Michelle Prinsler, are you feeling better? Can I torture you?
Oh, thank you for asking. I'm I'm getting there. I'm still get trying to work on it, but uh you're gonna ask where the light source is?
Yeah.
That's, that is a tough one, um, because I see on the right pair, it looks like it's. Coming from the right and on the left pair, it looks like it's coming from the left.
Right.
In the middle. It's, there's, it's also lit between the two of them, but it's a less strong light, so maybe. Maybe it's coming from. Maybe it's got two lights on it.
Yep.
Boom, Michelle gets the.
Crack on.
Man, imagine doing that. I'm not gonna be looking well, all right.
I I used to work in, I used to work in television and I did do lighting, so.
Wow.
So you will notice a lot of times, especially in product lighting. That they're gonna have dual light sources. Same things when you wanna do like a portrait and you just grab a still of a movie or something. Oftentimes they'll have a stronger light, which I imagine to be a left, because like it's the cast shadows stronger on the underneath the right side. But they do have a second or reflected light coming back into here. But Michelle was right, that both of the lights are kind of behind it because the shadow is coming towards us.
That would be called a key light and a fill light.
Boom, all right, perfect. Man, I think you're thinking better.
Say that again, a key light and a fill light?
Yeah, and sometimes if it's if it's a person, you would also wanna backlight. Um, to separate the back of their head from the background.
So if you've ever seen like video shoots and you got one person holding the light and then. To the other side, they'll have a person holding a big silver like screen. That's the fill light. So that that light that's hitting this side of the pair is hitting that fill light, somebody holding something or. Something of wall or whatever. I'm sorry, Michelle, go ahead.
A reflector?
A reflector, yeah, yeah. I always think of those uh funny little springy things that you can put to put shade in your window. You know?
Yeah.
Um, so good. So when looking online. That's another question, you know, especially if it's a product or a person, a portrait. A lot of times, some of my very favorite portraits have a strong light and then they'll have a fill light. They'll oftentimes be the opposite color of the first light. So they'll have like a reddish. Warm light hitting here. You'll see it all the time in American movies. Where they they're pretending like that the people are being lit by candles, but they actually have strong orange warm lights. And then they'll have a pool light, which is meant to think like, oh, it's coming from moonlight outside the window. And it creates these really beautiful like um. Transition, so it'll go warm light into the shadow, back to a cool light off the window. So you guys will see that all the time in um. Yeah, like in lots of movies, you know, you deal dealing with people in mansions and stuff is what I imagine. Where they're sitting and reading and probably thinking of something diabolical to do.
So Michael, does that lighting ever happen in nature or is this all created by us?
Well, yes, there's definitely, definitely reflected light. If we are at the beach, the lights can will reflect light backup. Um, if there's a wall, like if these pairs were in nature and it was all being lit by the sun. If there was a bright white wall here or, you know, anything else, uh birch trees or snow. Um, yes, reflected light is strong in nature, but not as strong as we play it up to be.
Okay.
Great question. So backlit, this one's a little trickier for a lot of people. Um, this is my bread and butter. Pretty much about seventy percent of my paintings are backlit. I just love that little bit of what they call rim lighting. Michelle probably has a cooler term for it than I do. But that rim light, that little fine line, what to do is we've got all these beautiful lost edges in here in the shadow, right? And then this, as they be, they become a little more pronounced, they're not really strong, but boy, are they strong. Where that light meets the dark. And so here's a good example of backlighting. Or rim lighting. You can see a little bit of reflected light from behind us. Hitting the pair there, backlighting. Backlighting with diffused light versus. Strong crisp light. So now we're dealing with backlight plus atmosphere, right? Backlight dealing with temperature shifts.
Love it.
Yeah, Dan Schultz, I really like his.
Oh, that's gorgeous.
I look to his work quite a bit when I'm dealing with backlight. Back three quarter light. Those stupid pairs again. This one, Yale, where is our light source?
On the left, kind of halfway above.
From the left over here?
Right, no, left, the other left. Oh, the right.
Right.
Say the other left.
Yeah, the right kind of up above and is it direct or behind it or behind us?
It's behind us.
Yeah, the highlights kind of are nice. You can see the cast shadow here. So this is called front light. Michelle probably has a cooler term for that too. I think it's very weird that side light is one word. Backlight is one word, but front light is two words. I did, I that freaked me out this morning when I was trying to figure out how to. Make sure I wrote those correctly. Um, but yeah, this, uh, if you guys know Eric Jacobson, a good friend of mine.
Yeah.
Front light objects a lot. Um, I went through a big spell where everything I was painting was frontlit. You can actually see one of my frontlet paintings here. Right? So the shadow is along the periphery of the clouds. Minus that hair there. Um, right? So you can kind of see that. You can see that within trees and stuff. So what that does is it brings this part of the pair towards us, this part with seeds. Um, there's a great example of that. It's not exactly frontlit, but it's front. Right over our right shoulder, right? The light's gonna come across over here. Front, top, right? I spent way too much time finding all these references and you guys can probably tell. Side left. Front light, but slightly to our left. Can tell because there's no shadows over here, but there are some shadows over here, but it's mostly frontlit. If you deal with straight, straight frontlit, it's often gonna be a little bit boring, very flat. So having at least one side have a little bit of shadow compared to the other side. Still gives us a sense of light and form. You guys see that? Man, really doesn't let me do much. But yeah, does that make sense, you guys?
Yeah.
Okay, so the light is behind us. Yeah, so the light is behind us, over our left shoulder, coming across. And this can be really beautiful, like it it almost wants to kind of flatten out, I mean, there's a lot of color in here, you got orange, yellow and green and red.
You could bump it up with lighter values.
Yeah, a little bit, yeah, you definitely could, but I don't even think you need to, I mean, the darts are quite dark still. Yeah, I'd be curious to see that one in black and white. Uh, boring product placement, front light, right, just doesn't wanna open, there we go. Right, I, I feel like this photo's been manipulated because this pair seems to be lit from the left, this pair's obviously lit from the right. So I feel like this was, there's a little bit of collaging going on here. Um, yeah, maybe this is the cast shadow from this, but it feels a little awkward to me. Um, but anyways, you can look at this guy and say, yes, front light, kind of lower light. Because the top of it is actually a shadow.
Look at the hard shadow on the stem.
Boom, yeah, good catch, a little bit there, yeah, good catch. So yeah, you can see that the light is not the same, these three pairs are all lit differently because. That's catching the same light, this one's left lit, so somebody got a little uh tricky there. Left leg and we are done, but yeah, what a silly generic tree. I don't know if there's cows here that like to eat the bottoms of this tree or why it's so perfect. But uh, that is the most perfect dome, oakish looking tree, love that branch though. Um, but I just really like the strong, the strength here, so if we squint our eyes at this tree. Just looking at the tree, we can easily see two values, right? Light and dark. Within the darts, there's only a little bit of transition, right? Squinting our eyes, there's only a little bit. It's not as bright as the lights, but it's definitely not as dark as the shadows, but only a little bit. When we squint our eyes at the left side, we can break that into two values as well, not including the dark, so three values with the yellowish. Uh, reddish color, the greenish color and then the shadows. So what we're gonna be talking about today as we do the pairs, I'm gonna break the, my pair painting. Into two values, a light and shadow, and then I'm gonna proceed to break each one of those shadows. Uh, or areas up a little bit, here's a very example. So if we squint our eyes, that's how you guys wanna start when you're looking or just take your glasses off, depending on your vision, superpower, um. Is you'll see a light side and a shadow side, right? That's what we wanna catch, that's what we're gonna capture the first. Then we can look into the light side and we can break that into a highlight or a brighter light. And a slightly darker light, look at the reflected light coming up here, reflected light coming into there. But then in the shadow will do the same thing and then we can create our transition, right? Even though this one has a strong edge, look at the. Transition as it's coming across here is a softer transition. This is lighter underneath because of the reflected light coming in, reflected light coming in, reflected light coming in. I know this is not a still life class. But can you imagine a tree on, in the desert or a tree over wheat grass? Right? Dry, yellow wheat grass and imagine the same light happening. And it's hitting the brightness of those grasses and coming back up. Um, so does this make sense, how this would translate to trees and or clouds?
Yes. The other thing that I think it is interesting about that is that the pair that's laying down is obviously more forward. Than the tree, than the pear and the standing up.
Yeah, why do you think that is?
Um, well, their, their, their horizon line is different and um the way the light is hitting the top of that pear. It's forward, so that, so pear laying down is not in a complete shadow, it's getting light, so it's more forward. And the um, oh, the stem on the pear laying down is lower than the pear standing up. So one is more forward than the other.
Yeah, so we look at the base, where this pear hits that table?
Yeah, their, their, their horizon line, that's what I meant when I said their.
Yeah, exactly right.
The line, yeah.
Perfect, yeah, I mean, this, this would be, I don't even, maybe this is a painting, I don't even know. Um, beautiful, I would love to paint something like this, um.
So that would apply like to the, when you're putting trees. One might be slightly forward, but the baseline, that dark shadow right underneath them is set forward or lower in the frame.
Yeah, so technically if you're.
Go ahead.
If you're gonna apply those two pairs to a landscape, that's probably closer to a landscape because one is forward, one is back.
Yeah, I mean, it could be a low, a lower bush and a taller bush, um, you know, casting its shadow, it can be. You know, I, whatever, yeah, I mean, these could be logs, a trunk, uh, it could be lots of things that would relate. But just learning about form, that is the big thing for this week and this is not like. Okay, I took Mike's class, I did form for a week, I understand, no, this is. Forever and ever and ever, we're always working on form, we're always working on. You know, we're always working on all of these things, none of this is, you know, did it done. Um, but anyways, lots of references there, feel free to grab any references or even grab a pair, if you do grab a pair. You know, maybe put it by a window and turn off the other lights. At your house, that way you have a nice, solid, you know, natural lighting source. In like, I wanted to show it in my studio here, but I've got so many lights at different angles. That it just doesn't work unless I turn them all off and only turn on one light. So if you wanna light a still life or anything like that in your home naturally. A single light source is your best bet.
And Michael, if, if we were painting something like that and we had four pairs, though, our eyes won't see that. Soft edge in the background, that's a photography trick and so we have to, I guess. We would only be able to imagine that, correct? The different sharpnesses and softnesses of the edges?
Yeah, that is true, um, one thing to do, Michelle, is. If like this was your subject and that's what you wanted to focus on, is focus on it. And somehow see your peripheral vision. That's what this is like, it's like we're looking at this, so imagine you've got four friends. In a row, kind of like this standing and they're all waiting to talk to Michelle, just waiting for their turn, right? This is the person that's talking to you. This is the person that you need to be listening to, you see these other three people. But not in the same detail, not in the same focus, so this is actually closer to how we see when we're focusing on a thing. So that's what I like to say too, is you wanna paint how a person sees or how a camera sees. Even though this is a trick within the camera, this is probably closer. To how a person sees. So that's why a lot of times you can delineate or soften the edges away from your focal point. Because you're telling the person, this is what I want you to be looking at. This is your focus, right? Um, if we were in person, I would literally do that, I would stand at the front of the class and I would say, look at me, you know, as. Difficult as that is, focus on my face and. Look at me and now think about the background, but keep focusing on me. And it all dissipates out and that's just our brain, that's how our brain works because it's taking in. The least amount of data, you know, that it can't, it's just too much information in the world. So, yeah, good observation, good observation, alright, um. I'm gonna go ahead and stop the camera because we're gonna change over really quickly, so if we do stop, share. And stop the recording.